Thank you so much for the blessings that we forget to thank you about. Please be with those that are in the storm damage, please be with those that are sick, please be with those that are having surgeries in the upcoming weeks. Please be with these young men as they make decisions for our county. Please be with our county patrons as they go to and fro from work this week. And we ask all these things in your son's name, in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll check and make sure nobody's in the hallway. I'll be right back.
Public discussion, meeting items, agenda?
Can I do that?
No.
Okay.
Holy cow, I'm blocking everything off!
OHC week, April 29th to May 3rd.
I make motion to accept OHC.
All in favor?
Do you need a second one for your award book that's original? I don't know what you're...
No.
Whatever you want to do.
I can hold it up.
There you go.
We currently have like 63 members in four groups in the county and several new members this year. So, it's been good.
One, two, three.
Hey, I'll send that to your man.
Okay, sorry. There are. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. I'll send that to you also.
Thank you.
I gotta have one. I'd care if you make a copy of it.
What, but I need something for the minutes?
Yep.
Do you guys have any questions?
Nope.
I'm just buying them.
Conferences, email addresses.
Hey, are we ready to call this?
Email addresses? Uh, no. No, mine...
Oh, we got a caller?
Yes, Megan.Ferrell at OKC.
Okay, next like industry's and company's.
Aaron.Netcalve. Delana's Delana.Hanson.
I sent something to you.
Aaron?
You guys wanna look at what I sent?
Thank you, ma'am. I've checked it twice. Okay.
Good morning, Lenita?
Yes, Ebony, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. I just didn't know if you guys would call me ten minutes after or immediately.
Yeah, no, we just did it as soon as we come down. There's two pages. I'm sorry, hold on a second. Okay, go ahead, ma'am. We have in here, we have District 1 Commissioner Garrett Johnson, District 2 Commissioner Mike Roach, District 3 Commissioner Nate Ross, the Commissioner's Secretary Nancy Lambert. Then we have some guests in our, uh... Meeting this morning. Yeah, sorry, you're blank.
Okay, no worries, no worries. I had my colleague Brian Burrow on standby. I didn't know if you'd be able to do a three-way call because Brian Burrow actually works, you know, he's boots on the ground there in Oklahoma. But if we can't do that, that's completely fine because I can, you know, debrief with him after the call. But is that a possibility that we could three-way Brian Burrow?
If you can tell me how, I will sure do that on my cell phone, but I'm sorry, I do not know how.
It seems like back in the day, and I'm dating myself a bit here, guys, but didn't we have the ability to click and then when we clicked over, we dialed the other number and then we clicked again, everybody was on the call? I think that's how it works.
All right, what's his number?
His number is 580-567-0070.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Okay, we can give it a shot. Okay.
Welcome to Verizon Wireless. Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please check the number and dial again. Announcement for welcome to Verizon Wireless.
580-567-0070. Ebony?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. It's 580-678-0070. You speak dyslexic.
Uh, well, I could have been rewriting too. Hold on just a second.
678, yes.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Lenita. Hold on just a second, I'm gonna merger calls, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you both hear us?
Yes, yes.
Okay?
Oh, perfect, you guys, this is awesome. I definitely wanted to include Mr. Burrow, but I'll introduce myself and just kinda give you guys a high overview of what we're calling. And we just wanted to provide you with some updates industry-wise, but also to provide you some updates with NextLink Internet's progress. So again, for those who do not know me personally, a few of you I've met in person, I think at the ACO conferences. But my name is Ebony Koozie and I'm a Market Development Manager with NextLink Internet. We've been around for about 10 years now and we have six office locations. I believe, we might be working on a seventh in the state of Oklahoma. And the closest office location to you guys is going to be to the east and that's going to be our Enid office location. So currently, we have active coverage in Alphalfa County. It is wireless coverage and that's going to be primarily in the central and western portions, but we also have tower locations just off of Main Street and south of the Salt Plains National Wildlife Refuge. And I still have to get up there to see the Salt Plains. I have yet to do that even though I was born in Stillwater. So I'm gonna try to make my way up there sometime soon. But we're really excited because we have pending coverage in the southwestern portion of Alphalfa County. And if you take a look at the attachments that I sent, one of the attachments is a two-page flyer. And on the back of that two-page flyer would be the image that you can reference that basically illustrates a high-level aerial view of our active and pending coverage. So the green areas, of course, are those areas that where we actively serve. And you'll see that some of that coverage and connectivity bleeds over into the adjacent counties. So again, I'm referencing what our NextLink flyer for Alphalfa County. And you'll see two colors, primarily green for active coverage and then orange would basically show you the radius for that pending coverage. And I'm hoping that Mr. Burrow can elaborate a little bit on that once I'm done just giving you a high-level overview. But in addition to our progress, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the rounds of funding that are coming from the federal government down to the states. And we're very proud to be working with the state of Oklahoma. As a matter of fact, I was just on a call last week with the broadband offices grant team. And Director Mike Sanders put out an article in The Oklahoma and it was an op-ed and he was basically just emphasizing that internet service providers like NextLink will be competing for unprecedented amounts of funding exclusively for broadband. And what that means is each county, based on their unique needs and population density and some other factors, will be given the opportunity to weigh in on where, you know, this money needs to be spent. So on the email that I sent to this Lenita, you will see these BEED eligible locations. And those BEED eligible locations, we want to ensure that everything is accurate, but I also believe that it's people who live in these small municipalities and these communities that actually know whether or not the connectivity is working for them, whether or not the speeds are allowing them to perform remotely. So we know that this type of connectivity enhances our ability to work online from home to log in for telehealth appointments for people who are unable to get to these locations. So that's a really big national push to incorporate digital equity in addition to the infrastructure money that's, you know, for infrastructure projects. So moving forward, you know, just as Mike Sanders said, we will be competing for basically $159 million in capital project funds coming up here shortly. And we were one of the winners as well for ARBA funding. That was one of the last release of funds. We were excited by that, but we didn't secure any additional funding for your county. We primarily secured funding for Oklahoma County, I believe Cato, and a few others that I mentioned on that flyer. So that's pretty much, I just wanted you all to have access to our flyer, but also to the Tower Point presentation for BEED and Digital Equity, just in case you had any questions on what the heck BEED was. I know that you're inundated with acronyms all day like we are too as well. So I would love to turn it over now to Brian just so that Brian can give you guys some updates. He boots on the ground in Oklahoma and he can just add additional technical information to what I've shared with you this morning. So we appreciate you giving us this opportunity and we hope to be able to secure support from you. And support typically looks like a letter of rec... Like a letter of support for future rounds of funding. We typically provide the letters that highlight what we've done in your particular county. So Brian, I will turn this over to you just so you can share any additional information that you may have.
Sure, I appreciate that, Miss Koozie. Thank you. So as Mr. Koozie said, we do service that area. Yet, like, you know, you jump off the map, I do pretty quickly and almost immediately. I think what I've found is some of the things that some of the things that make us, you know, what's different about NextLink. For one, we do truly believe in a customer-driven experience. And another thing is that we're local. I know that our home office is in weatherproof, but we hire and train and deploy locally. So we've, myself especially, you know, kind of suffered through this, as Mr. Koozie said, the equitable Internet brawl. We've kind of suffered through this as a group, as a team. And we see the difference that we're able to make in some of these smaller communities because we are from these smaller communities. We are these smaller communities. So one thing that I have kind of taken away from is a lot of times it's just easier if I kind of go over our services. But what questions, if any, do you guys, these gentlemen and ladies, have regarding our service and the capabilities?
I guess nothing in particular.
Nothing in particular? Okay.
That's a great question. I guess my question would be, are you guys familiar with our service? And would you happen to know of anyone that has been pleased with our service or have faced any challenges?
I don't know anybody with the service, no. Off the top of my head, I have no idea what everybody's got. I see the trucks running up and down.
You see the trucks. Okay, well, that's a power.
Yeah, well, we're working out, we're rolling out. There's a few initiatives that are out right now. Six gigahertz, which will run at gigabit speed to go home wirelessly, which is a huge step for really for our wireless services. Because that's what I kind of call it is you have your city speeds that you should finally brought to your small towns, your worlds. But it's about to stake in time, in my opinion. You know, like I said, that would be a gigabit service and it's coming soon. We've got it rolled out in a few big, a few locations already, down in southwest Oklahoma. And we're slowly, we're surely working back up. And it was actually our original, our original office was open in Enid and since then it has exploded up there.
That's exciting. That's exciting. I think in, as it pertains to wireless service, just to let you guys know, we are a hybrid provider of both wireless and fiber technology. But the benefits of wireless would be definitely cost-effectiveness. Of course, we know that to deploy either is costly, but wireless is more, less time-consuming to build out wirelessly. And Brian, I guess you can sign off on that, that, you know, there's a cost benefit.
For sure, yeah. It allows us to offer just a competitive price. And, you know, you see a lot of these industry level, you know, some of these other fiber companies, they're rolling it out and you're doing $35 or $65 for the first 90 days. Well, after 90 days, that, you know, that jumps up quite considerably. When it comes to the costs, we are probably, it's not the best price up there in the Enid, northern Oklahoma market. It's not the, you know, one of the best prices for your megabit, if we will.
Thank you, Brian. I really appreciate that. The only other thing I would add for you guys, Commissioner Johnson, Roach, Ross, and I believe I heard Nancy's name and some additional guests. We like to be involved in the communities that we're in. And if you're on our website, you can take a look at some of the charitable donations that we have made. We frequently sponsor events, county fairs, county commissioner events as well. And we would love to continue to offer that support. So if you guys have any introductions, you know, to the Chamber of Commerce or the Economic Development Corporation, we greatly appreciate, you know, an exchange and introduction. And I typically am able to dig and find people, but I often prefer to be referred to somebody just because it's, you know, a trust factor in the community. So, yeah, we're open and available to answer any questions that you guys may have. And you have the attachments that I've sent. And I'll just close with, you know, leaving the floor open if there are any additional asked questions. And if not, we just look forward to communicating with you as we continue to try to close the digital divide for Alphalfa County and the state of Oklahoma.
I have a question on Nancy.
Hi, Nancy.
How does this service compare cost-wise and sustainability to what we are currently having? And I don't know the total cost of that, but Lenita probably will. Is this something that's going to be savings to us or not?
Okay, well, what I guess...
They're talking rural right now, not towns.
Oh, not in town?
They're trying to get a bit out of the rural.
Well, the same question would be, how would that compare to those that are in the county, rural area, because they have services probably like South Central and Pioneer and others like that?
Yes, yes. Nancy, that's a very good question. We offer tiered pricing and the pricing, it varies. I will definitely say that. But affordability is one of the criteria that we have to meet for these rounds of grant funding. So if providers are not focused on providing affordable package options based on speeds, but based on, you know, covered populations, like people on fixed income. We used to participate in the Affordable Connectivity Program, but unfortunately, Congress has yet to decide to continue the subsidized Affordable Connectivity Program, which provided a $30 discount in addition to, I think, $70 for tribal entities. And it also provided a device for households. And I'm mentioning that because there's some stuff happening on the federal level that we will definitely need to keep you informed about. We're watching this stuff daily. But if the commissioners would like, I will speak with my marketing team and just see if I can send you over some high-level examples of what that tiered pricing would look like for Alphalfa County.
Fine.
Does that help, Nancy? I hope I answered?
No, as long as it's helpful to the guys and doesn't need to make the decision.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so I've made a note of that, Nancy. And what I'm gonna just see if I can send some additional information regarding affordability. I heard you mention the word sustainability. So I know that we frequently work to keep our technology updated and upgraded as it's changing rapidly, so we are definitely competitive in that respect. And I can send you some details on our technology that we use as well. So I've got cost, affordability, and sustainability information.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
On our...
All right, thank you so much, Ebony and Brian. We really appreciate it.
Okay, you guys take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Minister and Commissioner.
All in favor? Payroll warrants.
Is that everything, son?
All in favor? 100 warrants payment. Thank you.
Yeah, all right, I can have her first. I'll check one. Oh, mine. Oh, God. I can slap them if you guys sit down. Yay! Um, so Jessica is like my reserve child because of my being a doctor. She dropped herself in a fan's sock on the street. And it got all the way down her throat and it woke up just like my sister's. And she goes, "No, no, he won because he was..." I gave them both this price, so it was like a full-up change with the whole thing. I couldn't believe she did it.
We have land from District 1 and the sheriff.
We have land that's from District One and the sheriff.
Task contract services for Alphalfa County Sessors and Board of County Commissioners.
There's three copies later in the fourth place.
We'll be right where we had to sign at. I'll make the motion to accept the task. All favor. State pricing for landlines, for ADP, for shares office, for shares board.
This is a different kind of state pricing. So I told her, so let's just be transparent, run it through the meeting. It's taking their payments down to $492, $80. So they'll just sign that front page. I'm not sure if we're gonna have to do this every month or just what's going on there because they're having some issues downstairs.
What was our pay for that?
Well, it was normally only about $800, but it jumped up to like $3,000 something, yeah. It was huge.
More than that.
Was it more than $3,000?
Yeah.
So she's got it down to this $492.
They do not understand that we... State contract and tax and all that stuff.
Yeah, she's been on the phone like forever.
I'll make the motion to accept the state contract. All favor. Transfer for sales tax, County General 101 to Personal Services, $1,180.
Yeah, this is for the Personal Services, first for the sales tax and the Personal Services for mine. Garrett, you'll sign up there by me and then down below.
Is there just one?
Yeah.
All favor. Any unforeseen business? All favor.